Okay, welcome back everybody. We're at our 9:45 agenda item. This is not an action item. This is an update from Stephanie Nelson on Firewise Grants. Want to come to the mic? Please.
Was that unexpected?
It's kind of been coming for a while. She did a lot of great things for EMS.
She did. Hey, good morning.
Good morning. Good.
Wanted to come in. I've been kind of just doing what I need to do and letting things begin anew with Mara's position, but I wanted to make sure that you were updated with what I was doing. So, I probably spend 10 to 15 hour a week, a week, 10 to 15 hours a week either being with Mara or on the phone with Mara. And then she's also been shadowing, going along with me on projects that I've been working She's been dragged into a lot of meetings and that's...
Welcome to our lives.
Well, that's just it, but you know, meetings don't implement projects out in the field. And so it can be challenging. I've kind of, over the years, I got to the point where, you know, if it was a meeting with a landowner, if it was a meeting with someone to help educate or further the project, or if it was about getting us money, those were the priorities for me. And so that's helped free up some time so that I can be out in the field, which I have been nonstop. I wanted to bring you up to date on the two grants that I am managing. The first one is Jug, HFR, and that is over primarily at Jug Mountain Ranch. And we've done a lot of work over there. They've been a really good partner to work with. And we've also done some work just south of there in Jug Mountain, Jug Handle Estates. We still have an evacuation plan to coordinate in there. Had a little trouble with it. A lot of our primary landowners turned over, moved, and so yeah, that's, just happens, you know, when you have things happen over a long term. But they're trying to be proactive. They have a problem up there. So it's going to be really important for them to keep after this. We did a nice fuels project right in the middle of the, of the area, the subdivision, but there's a lot of areas that we can't work on in there because we treated it in 2009 with a different grant. And honestly, they really haven't kept up the maintenance that they're supposed to. A lot of the parcels are owned by new people, but we just don't have the authority to go in and say, hey, look, you signed something, or your predecessor signed something and you need to do this. We don't have any authority to make that happen. But we don't spend any more money in there. And quite honestly, it's kind of a, I'm going to segue real quick to kind of a cool deal. Just getting ready over here on West Mountain on this grant, I'm getting ready to do some work on a common area for the French Loop subdivision group, HOA. And I signed them almost three years ago. That's how long it's taken. Well, we had a fire. You know, it's just how long it's taken with all of this to get together. And one of the things that we've finally done is at the bottom of that common area is an eight acre parcel that we treated under a small grant 12 years ago. Well, that landowner has since sold the common area to the HOA and is gone. So there's no continuing agreement to take care of that eight acres. And it's a mess. You know, stuff grows on West Mountain like crazy, right? Well, one of the things we finally came around and just finally leveraged is that, and I set it up on, on Wednesday or Thursday, that I got the contractor that was working out there on the larger area, I got them together with the HOA, and the HOA is actually going to pay to have that area mitigated again. So we'll bring it at least somehow back into compliance. We're not going to park it out, but we're going to reduce the fuel something fierce. So I guess my point of view is, you know, keep looking for how can you leverage these landowners to do the right thing and take care of the maintenance in their, their areas? And I think probably it's important, of course, I share all of this with Mara, but it's important to really think about, do you have an area that's already been treated and have they done their job? And you want to go back in and do some more on some other landowners? Well, leverage them to make sure that that maintenance is done first. Because otherwise, you know, we lose it all, right? So...
So Steph, in these grants, so it specifically states that if we provide funding upfront to do this mitigating work, that you will continue to reduce fuels into the future?
For 10 years.
For 10 years. So after the 10 year window, can you get grant money on it again, or just once? Okay, so I guess my question then is, I mean, how do we educate the HOAs? I mean Jug's got a pretty strong HOA up there.
Well, we're not even working with HOA, we're working with David. And so, you know, he's perfect landowner. Not only does he keep all the work up and do more, but in addition, he, he wholeheartedly believes that public access is important. He allows individuals to use that private land. And so we get extra buck on that, right? Because not only is he doing the work, receiving the work, but he's allowing the public to come in and see it, and they have permanent signage up there.
So just to let everybody know, David reached out and he is going, he has a big woody biomass pile up there also that he allows people to use. And I put him in touch with that timber, whatever, it's doing our recycling stuff. So we're going to try and collaborate and come up with at least some reduction in costs in order for them to come up and do it all at once.
Just grind it all out.
Yeah.
Some pretty righteous stuff going on in there. I just had my 11 o'clock with the operations manager canceled because it's miserable outside and the roads are a mess. So I'm not able to go out there because we've got one more unit to, to do in that area. And so Joe and I, we're going to go around and, and create a plan so we can finish that up. But it's a great location and he's been a great landowner to work with.
So you've got one more unit and then that completes that?
Then Jug would be finished. And then, West Hazard, as you know, we finished a little five acre parcel inside a French Loop, and it's pretty good. I'm not 100% happy with it, but it's pretty good. You know, we had the...
Is that the new lady?
No, I'm going to tell you some good, I'm, I'm leading with the less, with a little more disappointing.
Okay.
And we're going to, we've got one more three acre parcel to do right up in there that's going to help there right away. But anyway, we did extend that contract for the low bid from December, and we moved it to May 31st. And I was out there with her on Wednesday, and I got to say, it looks great.
Good.
Took an extra five months, which is not something that we can make a habit out of.
Right.
But it was, it was nicely done and it was finished. You know, we had a lot of work up front, helping her understand what it is that we were looking for. But I don't know, I told her when we walked around, we walked a good portion of the property and really nice. So I'm very happy with it. It was a large acreage, 27.1 acres, so it was...
Pretty good size.
Well, it, I think, because I keep asking her, are you making any money at that? She's like, oh yeah, no, we could bid all day and do that, blah, blah, blah. I said, what if you only had five acres? Can you still make money at that price? I said, because what's, what's going to happen is I'm going to be back in here probably on the 17th with hopefully two or three, maybe four unit projects to, to open bids on. And my assessment is she'll probably be a low bid on all four of them. Can't, we can't do that. We don't have the kind of time to do that because we can't just stack them up all summer and hope that they get done. So I'll do some work with length of time when they need to be completed and, you know, some other issues like that. But I am ecstatic that, you know, she's a new contractor, she's got some good crew, she's got some good equipment, and I'm seeing a good result. I think that's all positive. Certainly I would think that will have some impact, maybe averaging downward our cost per acre a little bit. Although quite frankly, our cost per acre is here is cheaper than anywhere else. So, you know, we're just not seeing that $1,000, $1,200 an acre stuff anymore. It's just not out there. Boise County, they've got a contract for $6,000 an acre.
Wow.
Yes.
Well, they've got, I mean, gas prices are up. I mean, just to run the equipment is up, so I can't imagine...
Have you been to the grocery store lately?
I know.
You know, I mean, everything is more expensive. And so, you know, we have to be cognizant of that. And we want good work completed. You know, these next units are going to be internal, they're going to be, you know, up in Bear Basin, they're in strategic locations where I'm wanting to close some puzzle pieces to the other work that I've done up there. But they're, they're not out in the woods. They're definitely, they've got some stream crossing areas, they've got some wetlands, you know, it's a, it's not a big old giant area where you can just go in with your large equipment and get through it.
And she's got to realize that, you know, if you're always getting the low bid, you better start looking into your numbers. If I, if I'm getting all my bids, I know I'm bidding too low.
Well, when you start looking...
And that's part of business, that's part of learning business.
And, you know, what are you putting, what are you leaving on the table every time? And why? Especially when you've got a couple of other guys that they know, you know, how much it costs.
Sure.
You know, and it adds up over time. But I'm rooting for, you know, I think it's cool. I mean, I want her to bid on these next units, but we'll just see how that kind of falls out. We'll have to work it.
You said you have three or four to come in. Does that complete those two grants?
No, I'm still, I'll be working all summer on those grants. No, we've...
But how many more units do you think you're going to have to complete?
I just signed one 10 acre parcel this morning. I spent half the afternoon out with her last week. Definitely one of those little puzzle pieces I wanted to pick up. They really weren't certain what they wanted to do to participate, you know. Landowners, you know, we're not a factory, we're not selling motorcycles. We're saying, hey, we're going to come in and we're going to take part of your ground, your trees, your land. We're going to come in and we're going to do things to it that you're going to need to agree to based on what the long-term result is going to be. Because the short-term result's probably not going to be what you had in mind. And yeah, you're going to have to deal with your neighbors and what they think about it, and you're going to have to deal with, you know, other factors that come into play. So those take time. She's got a favorite tree. I'm going to work around the favorite tree. You know, we're going to flag it differently. She's got a tree that blocks, the next landowner over has a 24-hour fluorescent light on that goes right into her bedroom window. She wants to block that light. Okay, we're going to work with her on that. Takes a little more work laying out, got to instruct the contractor, got to have some sensitivity to that kind of result. That's common. And we're paying for it. You know, I mean, there's probably tempting to say, hey, look, we're paying for it, we're going to go out and do what we think we need to do. But I guarantee you, not every landowner is going to say okay to that. In fact, most won't. Because it's their private property. There's a giant chasm between public land management and, you know, you can see the strangers that get involved with saying what happens there, right? But they don't have to ask the resident whether they want to be a participant. We do. And so it's important that we build trust and a relationship. So when I shake her hand, tell her nice to meet you, and think about it over the weekend, we'll talk on Monday, I mean it. And when she says, okay, we really, those, those things we talked about are super important, I said, don't worry, we'll take care of those things. Well, that's, that's building a relationship. And to me, that's as valuable as anything because those are folks that are going to follow along and be part of this movement. Because this movement is happening. And it's not always possible to get everybody involved, but you start getting neighborhoods that are completing these type of activities, it breeds. And it's important because they trust, we're not going to come in there and just make a mess. And it's important.
Do those, is all of brush that's taken off these lands and stuff, does that all go down to the lake for?
No, we leave it on the ground.
Oh, you just leave it there for mulch?
We mulch it and leave it down.
Oh, you do, right there?
Absolutely.
Ah, I didn't know that.
You start adding transportation, you start adding, adding to what we already have in terms of the flash pile, eh, no. We, we insist that they have the capability of pretty finely mulching and leaving it back on the ground.
Okay.
Does a couple of things. One, it really keeps that release from coming back so quickly. And it, give it a year and it works its way back into the ground so those nutrients are going right back in. They're not allowed to leave piles, they're not allowed to leave giant chunks, you know, so it's, actually, it's pretty nice. And wildlife even like it. They just come back in abundance, so it's a really good system. I quit burning, my last burned project was at Little, Pine Lakes Ranch, was my last burning project. And they were up for the challenge, but it's a Herculean effort. And, you know, just not everybody should have a match, so...
You know, Steph, it's interesting because that's always been my concern with this is the long-term maintenance after these projects. And it's kind of apparent that sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. I know, for example, in my place, we've done about 300 acres twice in my lifetime. Now we need to go back and do it again.
Right.
I mean, it's, and I don't know if you can put it, it's a contract with that landowner, but how do you enforce it? How do you make it come back in 20 years?
Well, they do sign a contract, but you've got to enforce it.
Yeah.
I mean, that, then all of a sudden, now you're talking about a policy or a legislative change that would come from here or, you know, somewhere else.
Well, I think you have to look at it in a different frame of mind. In fact, at least we got it protected for 10 or 15 years.
Well, that's just...
You know you're going to have to come back in and do it again, or your kids.
Well, and this is my 19th year, so you can imagine the growth that I've seen. And yet I can take you around to some of the earliest treated areas where I started. I'm pretty dang happy. We were at the Y last, two weeks ago, and I went, dang, this looks good, you know? And so there are success stories. And there are areas, to me, that is a big part of how you select an area to work in if you can. You know, if you can get the grant that allows you to be in that area, some are tied, some are not, you know? But it is important to think about that whole big picture and what's this place going to look like 10 years from now when you come back and look at it? So they're probably...
And I think it's continuing education, you?
It is.
And I think that, yeah, that's part of the program we're going to have to maybe expand is how do we educate the communities afterwards?
I'm a, since I'm a Cal Poly graduate, I'm a huge learn by doing advocate. And I believe that if you really work hard during the process of doing these mitigation projects and you help others see not only the benefit, but the difference, I think if the ownership stays the same over that period of time, I think it works pretty well. Where we get tripped up is if they sell the property in five or six or seven years or whatever, and then the new landowner comes in, they have no idea, they don't know what was ever done before, they don't know what was treated. It's no different than the French Loop HOA saying, well, we didn't sign anything saying we were responsible for this, but we want to be good stewards and we're happy you're doing something else, so we're going to cough up our Marina Fund and we're going to have that fuel mitigated because we think it's the right thing to do. Well, that's three years of work put into that group about why we do things the way we do and why it's important. So to your point, it's a lot easier, you know, it's hard to talk to the general public. General public's always rah rah rah, but most of the times they're like this, right? Yeah, I know, now I know what they should do and I know what they should do. They very seldom really think about exactly what their role is in it. But the reality is, is that when you're actually spending money and you're making it important, you're not just saying, oh, I'm going to do that, you're making it important. I really do see a pretty good return on that. I see that folks are saying, yeah, I'm, I'm grateful because now I feel like I've got something here and they're telling me this is what I need to continue doing. And that's where some of the later assessments come in. You know, you go walk and talk with a landowner that, you know, is five years from a treatment and say, look, look at all that regen. My grandmother could clip those and drag them out of the woods, you know? This is the time where you do this kind of work, so that kind of education. But with people that have seen it done, you know, they've been a part of it. And of course, the big game changer are the small Firewise Grants. And the reason for that is, is that we get to poke into areas that maybe we haven't been to. We get to start that conversation, it's a cheap conversation in my opinion. You know, it's a cheap way to get in there and say, hey, look at this, we can help with that. We're having, we're having difficulty with your neighbors. They're, not because they don't want to participate, but quite honestly, they built in a really tough area. And I can't imagine why you would put an asset like that, maybe in some instances, your most valuable asset, in the middle of a catastrophic fire waiting to happen.
Sooner or later.
Right? So, and they're finding out, because some of the bids we're having on, you know, between 2,500 and 4,000 to come in and do just a portion. That's how thick and dirty and rotten it is. And in my conversation with the landowner last week, when I, when I told her, I said, you know, unfortunately, it's a small project. If you've got your whole neighborhood to participate, we could probably bring that down a little bit because the contractors got moving costs. But, you know, I think most people, they figure they're going to have to spend 4,500 to 6,000 to paint their house. But you do that, you roll that into your plan, right? Well, you need to roll some of this into your financial plan. This needs to be budgeted for.
If you don't have paint, you don't lose your insurance. The insurance companies today are canceling insurance.
Well, they're hitting people hard.
Yeah, so I just wrote a letter for a landowner up at Kings Pine, too. They were a really important landowner in the process that we did on that West Mountain, that Northwest Mountain Grant several years back. And they have maintained beautifully everything. They've done everything, they've done everything right. And it's like, I want to tell the insurance company, hey, I had a thousand, you want to know, there's a thousand other homes here that have some challenges, this one doesn't. Why are you picking on them? I know, but you know what I'm saying? It's like, all you do is drive around. And so I wrote a letter stating when the work had been done, stating what had been done, and then stating that I had gone back and looked at it and saw that the, the continued maintenance had been, had occurred, and gave them that so that they can use that in their quest.
I think you're going to be doing that a lot more.
Well, you know, it's kind of one of those things where, you know, Mara and I have talked about it because, you know, she's like, wow, that's, you know, but I said, well, I said, that's what people are going to be seeking. You know, they're going to be looking for some validation that they're doing some of this work. And, you know, you really can't blame them. But anyway, so I've got four community grants that I'm administering. And I picked on those because they're more challenging and I thought it would be good for me to be able to make sure that they got through the deal. But I love the community small grants because we impact so many more people than just one individual landowner. But they range from Smiths Ferry to Aspen Ridge. So my territory, I've been driving around, talk, talk about fuel. I've been driving around like crazy because that's what it's taking this summer to get some of these things accomplished. And then my last thing, I have been working, our legislative group and the fire working group has been working on updating the manual that we hope will be used to create the subdivision fire plan that's submitted to the P and Z. We've gathered with all the fire chiefs, gone through everything. So I'm in the process, it's just at this point, because I had written the manual to begin with. So now we're, it's been used a little bit, but we're trying to come up with something that we can present back to the P and Z. And then, of course, then it comes on to you to take a look at, you know, what are we hoping to guide the author of these fire plans to accomplish? What is it that's important? What do these fire chiefs think is important? What does Southern Idaho Timber think is important? You know, what are the tools that we're asking to be reviewed and then included so that planning and zoning can look at this document and say, hey, you know, you're saying that needs to be mitigated, okay? Well, then this needs to be done. Or you're saying, you know, wish you would go a different direction with your forest stand or your open space or your evacuation planning, or whatever element is being included in that. So I'm right in the middle of taking all of that new feedback that we got from the, those authorities, having jurisdiction and putting that into the document.
Good. Thank you for that, that work. I think that's, that's a big part of it. If the developers know what is asked of them, I think they'll do it.
Well, to me, it's, it should, don't you think it should be something that they'd want to know? You know, that, that, don't you want to take and create something that's going to last and something that isn't going to be at risk, something that's actually going to be safe and sane, you know, in order to, I, I don't understand why you wouldn't want to do that. I mean, I think most people should think about that with their individual house, right? Where in that field are we going to put it? And so I just, I just think that, I know it's probably not number one with a developer, but I think they should think about these things. You know, they don't want to have the place that burned up because it wasn't set up very properly. Or that somebody in suppression was killed, or that, you know, visitors couldn't get out, or residents couldn't get out. Those things are important. And so I'm excited about, you know, when we have a chance to...
Influence.
Bring it, don't burn it, is 10 years right now. I looked it up, I thought it was seven, it's 10 years we've been doing this, so I'm super excited. Mara has embraced it and has done a good job making sure that everybody's been communicated with...
Yeah, we kind of talked to her last week about budget and if we're going to bring her some part-time or full-time, more of a executive kind of assistant to do more of the paperwork stuff. And we're still kind of in those discussions. It kind of depends on when you're pulling the plug and lots of things like that. We've still got some time to work on that.
I've never spent more than $5,000 on contract administrative help, if that helps you. And I'd love, Mara and I have talked about this endlessly, and I'd love to be in on more conversations. I think I can show some enlightenment or past experience and show where, where is my time either getting to or where isn't it getting to? You know, what is a priority, what's important based on what I have seen happen? And just provides information about what might be valuable moving forward. You know, when we started talking about this in the GNA, they were going to show up with a bucket every year of 500,000, right? I mean, that was the goal. Here's another 500,000, you continue to build this, well, that's, that's not happened. And so, you know, of course, it makes it a little bit more challenging because then you got to figure out, okay, what, what, what funding can we use and what is going to give us back what we're trying to accomplish? I'm preaching to the choir here, I know you know all of that. But something I think about all the time. Mara told me that a couple of people told her they didn't think we, that I did anything. Right? Well, because I'm not sitting somewhere all of the time. You've got to put your wheels on if you're going to catch me because that's how I move. And I also work 14 to 15 hour days when I need to. That's just, that's my problem, that's just the way it is. But those are the type of things and the experiences over the years, I would always be very happy to share.
Good.
You know, because my, my contract was used to show you results. I don't always share the process.
It's the best use of your time is what you're...
I have to because I want to go ride my horse this weekend, so...
There you go.
You know, I mean, it has to be organized.
All right, thank you very much for the...
Thank you very much. Take care.
Have a great day. Okay, we're going to move on down to our agenda. These are all budget workshops until pretty much lunch. So we're going to start out with assessors, Sue, come on up, Gabby. Welcome, welcome.
Did you get a little hairdos from Sheridan?
I'm usually... Okay, so the first budget is for the assessor. It looks to me like Sue, nothing has changed from last year?
No change. I'm requesting no change on the assessor budget.
That's really good news, thank you very much.
Well, I know you guys are up against some... Well, I know you guys are up against some serious.
A few. Hey, is there everyone any questions on that? If not, we'll move on.
I'm good with that.
Okay, then the next one is going to be EMV.
So my DMV budget, I have requested that the travel be increased by fifty, about ten trips.
Gotta find it first.
Because right now, a trip and a half is.
Is that under the assessor budget?
That's under DMV.
Okay, let's move on to my bag each.
It's one hundred dash twenty-six.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, one more. So you raised mileage fifty, you raised supplies five hundred.
No, no, no.
Yes.
Fifteen hundred.
Supplies?
Supplies.
No, no, no. I am asking that my supply budget under DMV be reduced by thirteen hundred. And, and so my bound, supply budget on DMV is two hundred dollars is what I'm requesting, rather than fifteen hundred.
Okay, okay.
But I need that thirteen hundred dollars moved to my revow budget, and here's why. I have been paying for our Marshall and Swift annual subscription, which is obviously a cost manual for doing our jobs. And really, it should be in our revow budget, not our DMV budget. And so I'm just asking for a restructure on this to put where it belongs.
Then that number will change, Gabby. Did you get that?
Yeah, I thought as it was on here. If you won't leave two thousand, it's fine. You really don't need that much.
That's gonna be about a wash.
It is a wash. About fifty dollar increase, I guess, on our budget total.
And then let's go to revow. One twenty. And did we increase that?
Um, so we're just taking the thirteen hundred from the DMV budget, and we're putting it on to the revow, increasing the revow budget, supply budget.
What's line item? Supplies office. So that two thousand is gonna go to thirty-two, or thirty-three hundred?
Yep.
Is that Gabby? And everything else stays the same?
Yes. So on your supplies, is that including all your monitors that you want? Or is Jeremy putting that in his budget?
I put that request into Jeremy, and I believe that comes out of his budget.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, any more questions?
Are you, are you trying this year to do anything with software upgrades or improvements?
Um, so we have discussed the Arc Pro upgrades for cryptography. Um, and Kara and Jeremy have been working with the cryptography ladies. And so if we need a software upgrade, Jeremy's gonna put that in his budget. We're, we're trying, we're trying to make it work with the tools we have available to us now. If we absolutely, if we exhaust all of that and are not able to. And they are trying to figure out any new improvements.
Good. And if that happens, I mean, there's some software upgrades that are very expensive that are gonna be this year. And so if it's something that, you know, you could see a plan moving forward, you know, in the next three years, you're gonna have to have one, you know, kind of let us know that as we move through the process.
Right, so Kara and Jeremy and the cryptography ladies are working on that.
Okay, no more questions or comments? Thank you. Coming in? We're gonna move on down to the next agenda item. This is clerk. And buildings and grounds is solid waste. So what do you want to do here first, Doug?
It's all, I have it as me being the.
Oh, I showed you the, so it's buildings and grounds.
Clerk's office presenting the budget request.
Yeah, I got you. Four and ten. Okay, Scott, you left supplies the same, awards the same. You bumped cleaning. Now, is that, cleaning includes new janitors, our own janitors?
No, that's just cleaning supplies.
Just supplies?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And then you bumped supplies too? And you bumped supplies too?
Yeah, because, I mean, that covers all the coffee and everything.
Okay.
That falls under us, so. I don't see.
And then you raised garbage removal. Raise that up a grand. Is that trash for the county facilities?
Yeah, right here.
Did you figure in any kind of expense for the fairgrounds for trash? Don't they use the road department trash now?
I don't.
They're not supposed to, but they do.
They do?
There's always conflict there.
Um, we're gonna have to watch that one. That one we might want to think about. You dropped fuel.
I see as much.
You used thirty-one, thirty, and twenty-two, thirty-nine, and twenty-three. You don't want to leave that at four grand?
I can.
Does that include all of the small equipment that you've purchased? Because, what, you've got a skid steer now?
Yeah, that's the fuel for all of it. Our, you know, our trucks. We have the three trucks mine, the one that serves truck. Sander and stuff in. I would also use it to haul, easier to haul larger items at times, you know, brushy stuff, you know, trying to not fight the pipe rack and everything.
With the purchase of a merit title, do you think that you might need to transport more, driving more? You'll have two buildings to take care of.
Yeah.
I think we should raise that back to four grand. Instead of three, Gabby. Hey, you left buildings and fixtures at a hundred and seventy-five. You spent a hundred and forty-two.
Especially with thinking merit title on, we've already had an issue last week. Had to throw a stack, go out, actually, Arby's office, and we couldn't get back to work. So we had Cascade come up. Transformer was gone in it, and it wouldn't work. And there's no.
Is that the new stuff?
That's some history from some other people there, saying that the heating cord never has.
So we besting.
So I think we have additional maintenance costs there, plus we're seeing more of the year age out. Pressurers going. So if we need to bump that number up.
Well, so far this year, you spent a hundred and fifty-one. I'm guessing you're gonna be close on that one.
We're watching it closer, I bet. Yeah, because we've got another twenty thousand.
And then you, you've broken out manias for the fairgrounds. That's a new. Does that include the title company, that twenty thousand?
No, that's.
It's just some rodeo.
Okay. That's down there.
Commissioners, when we worked with Scott on this budget, we had not discussed the merit title and what we potentially need a budget for that for repairs and maintenance. But I think, as Scott's indicating, we definitely need to increase that repairs, maintenance expense line.
What are you thinking, Doug? Two hundred thousand?
I think two hundred.
Two hundred thousand? And then we'll just have, see, do we ever find out what the power bill is, the title company?
They're paying that directly, Mr. Chairman. So right now, we don't really have.
You don't know?
We don't know. We are still trying to research that, but that is being paid directly.
I'm guessing the billing that size is gonna be over a grand.
Scott, what would you take off the fairgrounds budget here versus the monies that we've given you off the ARPA funds? I mean, I think we need a line item moves we move forward for certain. Because we have different funding sources right now, when would you actually use this twenty versus this?
This would be any maintenance, right? Any type of maintenance that arises at the fairgrounds would come out of this budget.
So improvements to the existing red barns that are there.
Yeah, just do, you know, do some electrical upgrades. Stock barn and the, and the next one over. I'm not totally certain, because we discussed this, just how much is left in ARPA funds? Kind of getting, thinking, how much money do we have left? Looking at the building, you know, the concession bathroom right now, so standing. Just no bleachers. Hundred thousand dollars.
Thought those bleachers came in at thirty-seven thousand? Or did I see that number?
Right at a hundred.
Each, they're a hundred each, or total?
Well, it's, it's one section.
We, we, we took, what, two fifty out of ARPA?
Oh, we're gonna need to just work with Doug on that, because I don't know what you've spent and what you haven't spent.
A hundred and sixty-six thousand was spent, correct?
Yeah, that's what we.
What was committed.
It was originally two fifty.
Well, we actually did more than that. I think we had three sixty-seven.
And then he said, there's like an additional two hundred.
I don't show that now, commissioners, but let me bear with me one moment.
I had it down at three sixty-seven.
And we committed a ARPA, or was it two fifty? I don't, I thought it was two fifty.
There's a hundred and sixty-seven paid for the arena. And then we had an additional two hundred listed as upgrades to the bathrooms and potentially funds to assist with the cost of setting up the new arena and purchasing more stadium seating. That's where I got the three sixty-seven.
Three sixty-seven, okay. Remaining or three sixty-seven minus the?
Yeah, minus the.
Minus the one sixty-six that's already.
We have about two hundred thousand left.
Doug, that's, that's what I had. So I, you know, Scott, you need to work with Doug and come up with actually a spreadsheet. So we're tracking that for you. Making sure that we get everything that's admitted and paid.
Because also, you know, since this was for the fairgrounds, I thought it was possible for, you know, the water line, the water shock.
If we do a new bathroom underneath the announcer stand, is the old bathroom going away? That's a waterline power there that's gonna have to be.
High on, high onto the water and sewer there. Bringing the power from the old, from the old east side by the announcer stand. The announcer stand came off that pole. So that's probably the better route.
Back around to the north.
The power, you know, the closest power to the old bathroom comes off one before the red door over there. It's kind of the power and stuff, so.
So commissioners, what I show that we submitted to our SLFRF compliance report was obligated expenses of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, with a hundred and sixty-eight being expended, so roughly... Yeah, roughly two hundred thousand left, a little bit less than that.
I think it's gonna take you all of that to get that announcer stand and bathrooms. So that twenty thousand probably needs to stay, just in case we do have a water line.
That doesn't include the grandstand?
We have a hundred and ninety-eight thousand left in ARPA.
So we're about, what, fifty thousand short for the grandstand? But well, not to add, to add those three hundred seats, we would be that much short.
I thought that there was already grandstands purchased last year. I'll have to be a CIP for next year then, but I think we need to leave the twenty in there in case you do need to reroute a water line or something like that, but.
You don't want to go ahead and authorize fifty grand more out of ARPA so they can do the grandstands this year?
You know, I, I think right now, things are, yeah. I think things are so much in the air. We've already given three hundred and sixty-seven thousand committed to this. I think we need to figure out for certain where we're at, how much this bathroom's gonna cost. Because I think personally, being in the building industry, a hundred and fifty is pretty darn long. So.
Yeah, it's been kind of a, it's been kind of a floating. I'd like to see what we're gonna end up.
And I'm not gonna lie, because I, I thought we had expended money last year for ordering bleachers.
We didn't have any place to put them. And that's kind of, you know, with the, the new arena, you know, additional seating.
Yeah, I, I think we should upfront and buy the bleachers this year, too.
I would like to know how much they have in their carryover fund.
What's that?
The fair board. So they had money, but they're carrying.
I'm gonna need most of that just to put on the fair.
Help cut all of that off.
I think it was eighty-five thousand.
I use very good.
I, I, I would have a problem making a decision right now, because it's not clear to me exactly what's needed and what's gonna be expended. If you could have them, or you can break down what's already been committed, where those funds are, how they're being spent. I just think it's pretty loosey-goosey right now, like there's a, a big pool of funds here that, you know, they want to come after. We, we need to see what's being spent, how it's being spent, and where they need it.
So Scott is dedicated to the bad. Right now, like I say, I have the bid from your company, you know, a hundred and twenty-five. Three hundred seats. Is that on concrete?
No, it's actually a trailer.
No, it's a, like a semi-trailer. Opens up. Then we're gonna hose it down and store it somewhere for the winter. What's the plan there?
Well, I mean, once it's set up, we can.
Oh, year round? So Scott, have we got the our permitting or anything on that concession stand yet?
We haven't. We called me at seven thirty, first night, supposed to be getting the. They're already talking about ordering, you know, a package for stuff.
Better get moving on it.
Need to be rocking on that one.
Stand on soapbox out there.
That's just my opinion. You guys want to go ahead and do something. That's up to you.
Well, he can always come in, in a month from now, when he's got a spreadsheet done, and we know kind of what has been spent and what's left, and then ask for ARPA then.
I think that would be wise, to see that.
And then I think, the other thing that I think we need to think about is a separate line item just for the title company. Down the road, the maintenance, I know you, there's some talk about expanding a parking lot and some of that stuff.
Yeah.
Because those funds are still sitting in the lack of right now, and that, and all that work's gonna come out of that. You do, you know, there isn't a funding mechanism to set up a separate line item. I think in the, end of the day, it's just gonna be maintenance on county assets, just like every other building is, in my opinion. And so, I mean, the stuff that we want to do short term is gonna come out of that leftover lack of funds. There's not really a line item designated for that.
We're talking like what the, the parking. We're talking like what the, the parking or pavement? Cracks seal or whatever they're gonna call that?
We have about seven hundred in there, I think, something like that. I don't know where all the closing funds were, but six to six hundred and fifty is still there to improve that title company.
And that more parking lot and everything. Out of that fund.
You got any, anything back from Toby on that parking lot?
We've gotta fix the upper parking lot and whatever other improvements needed to be made to that building. Cause we didn't ask for any, any upgrades to be made. We're gonna have to redo that patio up top. My understanding was it was fixed. Yeah, they had somebody come out. Yeah. Ask Brian if it's working, but my understanding was it was fixed.
So we also need to get on the agenda, Doug, a discussion with Cameron and his group about some kind of a plan for that whole area down there. And they were talking, I think it was fifty to sixty grand for that. I know that's not your budget, it's not in this budget, but.
We were gonna have.
Go forward that, cause we waited until you were back. Make that decision.
Allison was also gonna get us a bid from the people that do that. I think we wait until she has a bid back from the other people. They asked her last week in order to go out and research because they had found somebody that actually deals with that type of planning. So she was gonna get a bid from them also.
Okay.
So let's wait.
You know when that'll be back?
If you don't, give her a letter and, or an email and ask, you know, what her timing is, but. That's outside of this too.
Sure. Scott, one question I had is I know we budgeted one time eighty grand to paint this facility. Are you still gonna do that or what's that? This year, this summer? Anybody think of anything else?
Janitorial, house still kind of in here. I did get some wages back from HR, but I asked him to. Motels and private cleaning and stuff are not.
In-house janitorial.
Yeah. We have no contractor available. ABS is unresponsive. Spending that contract we've been employing to do happy now. You know, I started, we had here in the annex, now we have here the annex, merit title, even my extension. So.
I am sending an email right now. I'm sending him an email right now.
I think we. Better off, so we have more control over. You know, buy our own cleaning products. Actually, Office Saber provides all the products.
What I'm thinking is in back of my mind is, I'm not sure a hundred and thirty five is enough if we come in now. Supplies and chemicals are gonna be thirty five thousand a year.
I think.
For all these buildings?
Austin, what, 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 the additional costs is we're getting? Janitorial staff is not gonna be able to strip them like. Clean the carpets. So I already talked with, um, other dread carpet cleaner specializing in that. How many have been, you know, twice a year? Have the upper glass. Everything under ten foot. Those are additional costs, it's not.
So how do you see this? These cleaners are gonna be on a rotation like they're gonna do?
You know, before we are full-time employees, we play, you know, we have kind of work out a schedule like this campus, this Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesdays and Thursdays, you know. Once a week, that July.
Late fourth.
I don't know if we want, you know, if we're having that look yet. Set up closets there so they're not having to pack, you know, their stuff. Stocking, you know, possible satellite. Places. Hard look at.
How much was that contract you remember? So we can add debt to this. And put it up to a hundred and sixty thousand, nope? If we can get those, it's gonna be hard working. People. All this clean.
Right now, they're, they're limited to thirty hours. Most three of them.
No way.
That's why it's not, yeah, that's why it's inadequate. So we're looking at, we're gonna make it go for thirty hours to, to eighty hours. Possibly a part coming person. Hundred hours a week.
Let's do it on two if we can. I mean, you're gonna have to backfill because you're gonna have people sick or vacations. As an employee, so there's gonna have to be times where they're gonna have to have a little extra support, but. If we're only getting thirty a week right now, we bumped to eighty a week, that's a huge change.
I don't think we're gonna do it for a hundred and sixty thousand either.
There's a lot, there's a lot of work. Vacuum all of this and. Clean all the bathrooms.
What do you think, Doug?
I don't know. This is where I always, you know, as employees, as elected officials, we have responsibilities to keep our, keep our own area clean as well, right? So is there an option for us to, again, do limited cleaning within our own offices? To reduce the burden on hiring someone and maybe just hire someone like we just could specifically do the bathrooms? I don't know. But it's, you know, to add an additional thirty five thousand or thirty thousand for a janitorial. It is a significant amount that, again, I always say this, that we would reduce, you know, paying.
Raises.
Raises. So I, I, I just want the commissioners to take that into consideration as well.
And honestly.
Nobody has enough work to do. You don't see other.
I don't know, Scott.
We, we used to do that years ago, Scott.
I don't.
All the office people kept their own office clean and.
And we had total complaints.
But we've had no complaints. I don't think anybody's with the system we got now, seems to be doing a pretty good job, but I I believe women's bathrooms, I don't know.
I think there are, there are complaints on occasion, whereas they're not our cleaning, uh, the way that they probably should be by being contracted with us, right?
Just for this facility?
That's the sheriff's department.
EOC, okay. I don't see how they can do it.
They don't.
So Scott, was it a contract?
I didn't pay them their last payment last year. They didn't pay the last nine thou, they make nine thousand dollars. Cause they did not do, they've not done the floors. Policies, we don't pay for.
And, and what was in their contract? I mean, certainly we didn't contract with them for thirty hours a week.
Well, that, that doesn't come out of that, you know, I required that they have three full-time employees, but I didn't, you know, I didn't specify how many hours they had to have. They got three employees right now. They take that thirty hour block and divide them into three of them.
I think this is one that, you know, we leave in there, we think about it a little bit. Maybe talk to some of the employees in the building on what they would feel about it. Now, that was one of the larger complaints that I got when I started, but COVID had just hit two when I started, so. Probably thereafter. And that was the concern about having proper cleaning is, is the health benefit.
But I'd say most, you know, they have a contract. Or they have a contract. No, there's no contractor up here.
So maybe we reduce the number of days that somebody has to be cleaning.
Austin says they have five days a week here. Fridays. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we get the annex and the merit title. July and HR once a week.
You know who does the title company? May wanna talk with those folks, see if there's somebody locally they use.
Do they do downstairs where our guys are too?
Oh, Katrina, yeah. Well, I mean, you guys were adding another building for somebody to clean, I don't.
There's lots of put-ins upstairs.
I don't think there's enough money here to do it all. And I understand what Doug's trying to say too. We can leave this one open.
I think we need to look at our overall budget.
Remember we, where's the twenty five thousand for the annex contract? Does it come out of this?
It's, it's, it's under, yeah, contract janitorial.
It's in this hundred and thirty five? Yeah, you guys, we're gonna, that's not gonna work.
ABS is.
You get three people for thirty hours a week for a hundred grand, that's pretty good.
Not at ten hours. Not at ten hours a week. That's only thirty hours a week.
So Scott, do they, you're not, they're not expected to clean the carpets though, are they? Okay, so that's another contractor we just hired out?
Stripper wash floors.
And take care of carpet also. Do they do carpet cleaning also?
Make sure they don't loosen the glue on those panels of EOC again. Okay, anything else?
We also need to see how much of this building is gonna be utilized after all of this. Because this, the, I mean, it's gonna be severely reduced here is what needs to be done unless some of the sheriff's office comes over or something.
Yeah, and see how it is and. Really can really work out with the scheduling.
Yeah, there's a lot of gray area the next year you guys are gonna help.
You're talking about, um, sure, about.
And you prove.
I thought they already fixed the grass, dude.
Which comes back.
Cause it didn't reseed it. You know, did they spray with Roundup?
Spray with something.
Must have had some Roundup in it. That grass will come back. It'll take a year, but.
That's what I was just asking during this, you know, transition of all of this, we pull the grass out, put down some gravel or something and just make it hard sweeping and low maintenance. So you don't have all of that.
You could just buy sod and lay sod on top. But that should be off a nursery expense, not ours.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do that or just.
And then save the costs ongoing as far as having somebody there mowing it.
Watering.
Yep, spray the weeds, all good.
Maybe we should have you get a bid on what it would cost to do that. I don't, I can't remember how much grass is up there. Honestly, I don't think it's that much. And we are gonna be changing some of that anyway with the new parking lot and some of that kinda stuff. But I don't think we should put anything more in as far as grass or anything like that. We need to try and make it as low maintenance as possible.
Anything else?
Up that facilities.
Scott, let me ask one more question on that really quick. On the landscape maintenance, you went from like twenty three and twenty four, sixteen and twenty three thousand down to five thousand. Why is our landscape maintenance so low?
Um, well, we have projects. We had, you know, we changed out the landscaping in the annex. We, um, you know, redid the retaining wall out there. Sprinkler system in around the sheriff's department. So we really don't have any projects evidence. Any reason to, you know, ask for that one.
So you wanna go to solid waste next? They raised household hazardous four grand.
And waiting to hear back from cleaner.
Electricity. Oh, good. Dropped heavy equipment, eighty seven thousand. And refrigerant.
So what, what was the decrease for?
We rented it, what was it, excavator?
Yeah, we kept, you know, have the right excavator. That's, you know, kind of falls now that we're grinding and stuff. The only real significant changes I have, cause I did, um, they're gonna come and ask for four of us. So, um, the ones that really affected were, um, the, um, transfer site contract. Is what's gonna happen if it's going to waste operations up there is gonna go, um, for forty dollars and sixty one cents a ton. So. We give nineteen thousand, nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty four times last year. Go up twenty percent. That would take us to twenty three thousand three hundred times this year. Waste operations.
So Scott, we're at the transfer site. We're at three ninety seven, basically three hundred and ninety eight thousand right now at the end of June. First of June, we're.
Yep.
So we're gonna, we could potentially be eight hundred thousand by the end of the year.
Well, we're looking at this, next year's budget is gonna be.
And we have to look at what's been spent so far this year.
Yeah, but I'm trying to predict the ton in over half.
December, January, June. June is eight months into it now.
I'm gonna be about.
You have your cheat sheet down there, Scott. He needs those numbers for a conversation. So take a copy of this cheat sheet.
What I'm trying to do is look at what we hauled last year. Check what we're gonna haul in thousand twenty five. And, um, like I say, Mark already told us asking for four percent. Long haul is gonna go with fifty. Thirty two a ton to fifty three, thirty seven a ton.
Fifty three, thirty seven?
Yeah. Right now, last, with the increase EB, you know, starting the first of March, it jumped. Clay people haul to fifty one dollars and thirty two cents a ton. They're gonna ask for four percent on top of that again. For twenty five, so we're gonna jump to fifty three, thirty seven.
Which is an almost twelve hundred a truck.
So, like I say, last year, we, they hauled nineteen thousand four hundred and thirty four times. So. Don't know what's gonna be this year, but we're gonna be running here down there. See a twenty percent increase in the next year. Look at possibly hauling. We're gonna look at possibly hauling twenty-three thousand times in two thousand twenty-five. Fifty-three, thirty-seven a ton, you're looking at one million two hundred and forty-four thousand six hundred.
Have you been notified by Payette County of any tipping fee increase?
No, that's, that's.
Putting something in there for that, too.
That's right now my clay. Yeah, cuz, um, yeah, it's three hundred and ninety thousand, I'm probably pay a raise in it possibly.
They send that notice out here pretty quick.
I don't know, you know, since I've been here, they've never increased the price.
Maybe we'll give, or I can, if you want, give that guy a call, see what they're planning.
Yeah, cuz right now that's.
Get a real close figure.
The commissioner down there, Jennifer Reby, told me they're in conversations and they're having public hearings on price increases, but she said it will be increased because they went from thinking they had a hundred-year, uh, plan to they're down to like forty years. So that's another one, I think she said.
Forty years, okay.
Wife in there.
Yeah, so they're looking now going, I mean, Ada County's even taking over there and they're kind of starting to say, no, we're not taking yours, you need to do something else. So we're at risk there also.
Adams County isn't taking.
No. Well, just so you know, in, behind a tamarack, I think the county was shipping thirty-two thousand tons.
Up a year.
So year twenty-three, you jump really fast.
Yeah, so I, I added twenty percent to last year.
That worked close.
Took the new numbers with the four percent added to. Recycle is gonna jump to a hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred.
I'm down on equipment, capital, buildings, where you've jumped that up to three point nine.
Oh, that's.
Where's the expense for the recycle roof?
Well.
No, but didn't we, wasn't that like four hundred grand? How come that's not in our twenty-four activity?
So we got that done last year.
Twenty-three activity.
Did we do that?
It doesn't show it. It doesn't show any expense. Well, that's the six hundred and eight, nine thirty, nine seventy-three. So we've got three point one million to spend this year on buildings?
No, that's actually, that should drop down to one million seven hundred thousand. That includes C I P. Which is our own.
That tells me we've got a little bit of extra in that. Sounds nice fun.
Yeah, we're looking right now, actually it's kind of.
You're gonna start building on that floor?
Well, they're the engineering portion, so.
Yeah.
Have a meeting.
And you know, Scott, I was wondering if we should talk to Lake Shore about changing how they shove that trash around on that floor? Instead of using a metal bucket on a mini like they've been using to figure out some other way to do it. I, I've watched them and they've gone, grabbed a mattress and they drag that mattress and shove everything off in the truck.
They can sweep the floor, they still gotta pick it up, cuz the way that you can't, you can't.
Shove it off, yeah.
It's gotta be picked up and deposited in there. They like to see old mattresses come up.
Yeah.
But it's the loader coming in pushing and pushing. So we need to great west to assess. Take bay down for thirty days and saw it up and check it out. We gotta see if there's strong ties that ruin, you know, column to column.
Right. Is that big front end motors, does it have teeth on the bucket?
No.
It's just a straight blade. If there's something else we could do instead of steel on concrete like that. Figure out another bucket for that. It's not so degrading on the floor.
It's kind of hard, cuz anything you use, you know, someone's gotta clean the floor. Plastics and concrete. I actually asked Travis if there was something else.
And knowing everything.
Everything that's hauled in there. Besides the household trash and residential trucks, we have construction debris, we can't go up in C and D anymore.
Just need to plan to make sure that we're doing maintenance on it on a regular basis instead of waiting.
But we don't wanna pour a brand new floor and turn right around and get it all back up again either.
At what's your two hundred and twenty thousand in contingency?
Just to.
Just in case?
Just in case.
It's just kind of just in case, just seems.
This hollow waste went up a total of nine hundred and five thousand. But we have a lot more trash.
Yeah, and like I say, they're working on being wood grinding, they talked about in-house, but then the rest of Terry had, you know, a contractor up there last week to grind it. Sure they're gonna haul it off.
Right.
Mark's supposed to talk with Timbercreep again this week. Are looking at.
It's gonna be twice a year.
And then, you know, our final grinding, you know, they can come up and do that one and then go down to Lake Fork and do it. Firewise.
Keep in mind that Sherry's got some stuff at Jug Ranch that needs grinding, too. Maybe make us a better deal.
So Scott, do we have, uh, any, is tamarack at all? Interested in taking any of that? Take roundup material?
They weren't, they weren't interested in taking free. So I don't have a deal with power or what, you know, why? Why they're not interested? Cuz we originally a year or so. Big electric grinders across the road, it's gonna be a center.
I know power cut the payment they make them in solar. It's not, it used to be like four point three cent a kilowatt and they've dropped that.
Yes, so.
It's a problem.
Wow, I mean, just.
Think they're getting other.
We just taking it for free, we cut truck time just from here to tamarack and back.
Yeah. But if, if, if the wood and breeze kept, you know, like last year, you know, Timbercreep's interested in taking C and D, you know, it's not going to him, they can make cattle bedding out of that. Even the wafer board and stuff, you know, they got a way to do it, they're not gonna tell anybody. Yeah, but it's a secret. It is a marketable product. Stained melody.
You would think the glues and wafer board would be hazardous to the dirt, but I guess not.
Yeah, they, they got a way.
They got a way to get that out?
So it went up nine hundred and five, but eight hundred of that is the specific project for the capital building, so. Sound like we're increasing anything else dramatically.
Yeah, we are gonna have to increase the long haul in the, um, contract, the transfer site.
So it'll be up more than the nine hundred then when all of those changes are.
Yeah, cuz you're, you're looking right now, it's last year's budget was seven hundred twenty-four. For waste management contracts there. Two thousand twenty-five.
So as far as this goes, you're looking at your income stream also, announced balance? I mean, our fees are enough in order to accommodate the additional expense that we were gonna be.
Right now, since we restructured the, you know, the commercial side of, you know, um, running as we do. Pay our, our solid waste, but it's very costly budget.
That has to be because we have to pre-plan for that next step on the, um, to get rid of our tipping stuff, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're gonna have to figure out what to do, cuz Payette County can shut us down. I mean, we're, we would be in a world of hurt if we don't have, you know, an idea for the future, so we have to build that budget.
You're gonna dump it in the lake. Dump it in the lake, which is.
We're gonna have a Hasbrook site pretty soon.
Twenty-three, the total buzz is three point three, now we're up to seven million. Boy, that went up fast.
That was.
Again, that's that one time.
That's the capital, Mr. Chairman. I mean, and if I can ask a question, Scott, what projects do we anticipate getting completed this year? Because is, do we need to reduce this three point nine? I mean, right now it's three point one. What, what projects are we gonna complete at the transfer site this year?
Like I say, we're starting right now in the refurbishing. So we're gonna reduce that number from three to one point seven.
For this, um, for fiscal year twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, we, cuz this, the thing with that refurbishing is gonna carry for two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five.
Okay.
So that whole fund needs to go clear for two thousand twenty-five, cuz we may only be able to get half of it done before winter comes and have to do the other bay, you know, in March, April and.
You can't shut it down, I know that.
I know, it's.
We've already budgeted part of it, though, that's going to be done before October first. So that's.
Yeah, we're starting at engineering and see, you know, what kind of schedule they come up with.
Well, when you guys get to that new Lake Shore contract, you guys are gonna have to really be on your toes. There are a lot of changes there.
Neil's in charge of that, and Scott before he leaves.
You're gonna be here, too.
Um, I guess what Doug's asking, what, what I'm asking is how much concrete are you gonna pour this year? Will you be pouring any concrete? You think it will just be the planning? Because that, whatever you're gonna do needs to come out of that three point nine, needs to come down. You think we'll pour concrete this year? Before October one?
I hope so.
If you reduce that by half, that one point seven?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're budgeting enough, though, right? That, that we definitely have enough to, uh, to, that we have enough available for these projects, so yes, if we can gauge what we're gonna complete this year compared to what we're gonna be completing next year. I know that it's very tough to do, but we definitely need to get in the ballpark. And so of the three point one million that we have budgeted for for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, how much do we anticipate are gonna be expended before October? Projected? And then that's gonna determine what we need for, for carry over next year, right? And the projects for next year?
Yeah, cuz I can say, I requested C I P for refurbishing. So I'd say that's.
At a minimum, you're gonna need one point seven for next fiscal year?
Well, the total product. Three hundred thousand for out of this year. Three for twenty-five.
What's three point nine then? We're only using one point seven for that, that's another.
That, that had two capital projects in it. One was refurbishing, one point seven. The remainder was if we're gonna do a biomass project and buy a diamond Z grinder and loader. So you can take one point seven and take out of that and leave there and take the rest.
That makes sense.
You know, back, you know, into solid waste.
That's what we, I think that's what we.
We also got three hundred in that budget line item for a grant. Are you gonna try and, now we don't have a grant writer, are we gonna try and write that grant again?
That'd be nice.
I don't know when it was due, so. I think I gotta get a grant to write while we're in conference.
Or Mike is getting us a prep letter, yeah.
We, we've got a plan, Commissioner Thompson. We can potentially be interviewing an individual on the tenth of June.
Oh, that's awesome.
That's good news.
But he, uh, the individual that we're looking at won't be able to start till September. He has some great, uh, great qualities bringing to.
Well, Scott, that, that three point one, you'll, you'll use one point seven of that three point one.
Yeah.
To do the floor.
What's that?
To do the whole floor.
That's to refurbish the whole building.
Oh, the building too. The building also.
That, that, one point seven is just for the building.
Right.
That is to fix the floor. Look at getting the, um, trench drain refurbished and operation, but he says they don't do that anymore. And, um.
We don't have to do it?
Well, well, it'd be nice if we could wash it down. That is to redo the red iron around the door frames, um, extend the walls up at least ten feet on the side. Putting a divider wall down between the base, so they're pushing trash and it doesn't spill over possibly.
Oh, that'd be, that'd be nice.
We put, we put some of the locks up we got right now, divider in there.
Hopefully they can do the floor.
Dragging behind again.
Yeah, we gotta move on. Thank you, Scott. Uh, the next gen item is a budget for prosecutors. Mr. Nago, come on up to the hot seat.
Just in graduation? Sure hoping they'd call his name.
That was a good feeling, isn't it?
Where, where did the middle name Axel come from? Long story.
Welcome, Brian.
Um. Thank you.
We'll get right on into it.
Okay.
First one up is travel. You jumped that two grand. I'm assuming that's for, uh, education or what?
Yeah, so a little bit of, there's actually a slight change to that one since, uh, I talked to Doug, or to Doug, and it, the reason that we changed that, so between travel and education, I think we've got a total of ten grand. Is that sound right? Education, I think we left three in there. We had travel at seven. What I'd like to do is change that to eight and two, so eight thousand for travel, two for education. Just because that's the majority of our education costs. Um, or I mean, the majority of our costs for our C L E credits and everything come from just traveling down to Boise State and hotels down there for our I P A A. We'll do a whole lot of traveling out of state for, uh, for C L E's and education because I P A A provides for that.
So you wanna take the five grand and raise it to eight thousand, not seven? Is that correct?
And then reduce education other by from three thousand to two thousand.
Two thousand, okay.
That went up a little bit. It's just revision of Arnie.
Nope. And then you jumped sell your six hundred, which I'm assuming is another position. Uh, maintenance office equipment you left same, and then rent lease buildings, of course, that all goes away.
Yes.
But maybe we're gonna charge you a lease anyway. We should get our first check here pretty quick, don't we? That would drop thirty, three fifty, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Um, dues and membership be bumped a grand. I'm assuming that's for more staff.
Yeah, and just to increase, uh. Yeah, and just to increase, uh, in our West Law.
And then the last one I see is other expenses trial. And you're looking at the activity this year, I can certainly understand wanting to jump that up, ten grand.
Yeah, I mean, this was just a year that, I mean, we're gonna go over that. We've already spent almost nine thousand of that. Luckily, we'll budget at five thousand this year.
Is that for the Capital One murder?
It's just for both murders, so, um.
Both of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so. I mean, I don't know. That, that's, that's a difficult thing to predict. We've never really gone that far over five thousand, um, but this year with both homicides, um, and having to do grand jury indictments on those, it's just one of those things where we had a lot of different costs and everything. It was weird stuff, like it wasn't, it wasn't the kind of cost that you would expect to have every time. You know, one of McCall police officers was, had left the department by the time we, we went to grand jury in one of the murder cases. And so we had to pay to fly him back here. You know, just little things like that that I just wouldn't expect again, but it seems, I don't know, just, just given the, the increase in caseload, um, that we've had, especially on the felony side over the last year or two. It seems like having a, uh, a little more in that, um, in that budget is gonna be wise. Because we do, you know, I, I've got a trial set in August right now that is gonna require some extra.
So do we bump this more? Do you think ten grand's enough? That's my question, or do you want, because you're way under budget from the previous year, so you got some room to play? Or do you wanna jump jury witness fees? You have zero for that.
Right. I mean, the, we consider when we have to fly, like this is here, or cook them up, we, we take that out of our trial budget. The witness fees, we eliminated because generally what we're talking about when we're talking about witness fees, it's like, you know, we give people.
Oh, somebody sends a day.
Yeah, it's not very much, but it's, that's, I think that's paid out of the courts.
For, no, for jurors, you only jurors.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't have a lot of for witness fees, do I?
You're just taking that out of other expenses.
Yeah, other, other trial expenses. I think it's enough and it, you know, it's one of those things where some years it's gonna be three or four thousand and some years it's gonna be ten or twelve, but it's just hard to predict. Because I don't know. Now, looking at fiscal year twenty-five, like I've only got one trial set. I just can't imagine that, you know, we live, I don't know how many years, ten, twelve years without homicide. And, you know, I mean, then we had two in one calendar year, so.
And a manslaughter.
Yeah, yeah, and so.
Knock on wood, right now, Brian.
Yeah, yeah, I can't really, I can't call that a trend. Hopeless, I'm not willing to call it one.
And I hope not. Okay, if you're happy with the ten grand, I'm happy.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and you came back and saved thirty thousand off the whole budget, so I'm really, really happy.
Yeah, yeah.
That's because we had to spend a million seven or two.
Details, details. Focus on our budget here.
Anything else? Any more questions?
Nothing for me unless you got, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions you got about.
So I'm, I'm curious now, now that Arnie's on board, you feel like you're fully staffed for the next five years?
Yeah, I mean, the criminal side's been heavy this year. I'm not lying, um.
He's helping on that side too a bit, though?
Um, like I said, I'm not, I'm not willing to call the current increase in caseload a trend yet. So hopefully this is more of a lift. But if it continues, if the current felony, uh, and misdemeanor criminal caseload continues to rise at the same pace.
It was, it was just a bad winter, you know, just got people messed up.
Well.
We've increased your department so rapidly, you know, compared to the other departments, that I'm hoping that, you know, you guys can find stability there and support each other for time going forward.
Yeah, yeah.
And that all heads Lee Valley County alone. Don't come here. We don't want you.
Good as a pipe dream, but that's okay.
I know, exactly.
Everybody and their dog is coming here now.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna be able to. But hopefully, that doesn't necessarily mean that's serious.
Can I ask, because, because I just, I don't know that I've ever really asked these questions, but does your department have any source of income? Is there anything to offset the expenses that we look at? Any fee income from the courts or?
We don't, the only income that we have, uh, is the money we get from the city contract for the city of Cascade. So they have a law enforcement, as you know, law enforcement services contract with the sheriff's office, the city of Cascade does. And we face, we need to charge small people for prosecution, the city of Cascade's cases. That's one of those things that I frankly do. I do it as, as a way to support the sheriff's office. To be quite honest, I, I don't like doing the city contracts because they, you know, you, they're just difficult. Because they, you get a change in city council members all the time. Sometimes city councils, you know, want you to be able to them and do better stuff. And, you know, if I'm gonna do prosecution work, I'm gonna do it all the same. Everybody's gonna get treated the same way. I'm not gonna, there's no special favors, no special people. It's just, I do the work, I do it the right way, and I do it the same for everybody. And so.
The way it should be.
Right, and so that, uh, that is, I don't like to, um, sometimes these city contracts can be a challenge because you do have a city council that generally wants to have input on how you do and what you do.
Is that mostly criminal? There's not much civil in Cascade. I know there isn't at all.
It's together a little bit, you know, because then the question becomes, are you gonna do that kind of stuff? And so there's always some, some, you know, give and take there. But for the most part, I, I do it mostly because it's a contract that the sheriff has. And I don't want the sheriff to have to, you know, we handle all the sheriff's cases. So sheriff's office, they charge somebody, doesn't matter with what, we handle their stuff. But it's tough for them when they've got this batch of cases from the city of Cascade, that they gotta deal with some prosecutor who, you know, for the city of Cascade, if they were to say, okay, we're gonna go out and find our own city prosecutor. Well, first of all, it's gonna be really hard to find that person because they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to pay him. And it's, you know, it's a small caseload, but nobody's gonna take it because it's, it's not gonna be enough money, right? It's not gonna make it worth their time to do it. And so city of Cascade would have to overpay for prosecution services. They probably overpay somebody that, you know, isn't gonna give it the time that it needs. And they, the way they pay those contracts, it's like, say they just, just pulling a number out of the, say, say the city of Cascade says, I'll pay Joe Schmo attorney fifty thousand dollars to handle all of our, our prosecution work. Then you get a prosecutor who is gonna be doing other work too, and they're gonna be getting paid by the hour on all their other work. And they're gonna get paid fifty thousand dollars to handle that stuff from Cascade, whether they try five cases or zero cases. And inevitably, uh, they try zero cases. And because they get paid the same, whether they do a lot of work or a little work.
My opinion, that's what's happening in the court right now.
And, yeah, so I, I think that it would be a disservice to the city of Cascade and to the sheriff's office. Having to deal with, with, uh, somebody in that kind of context. So I think it's better for the people of Cascade, I think it's better, um, for the sheriff's office for us to do it, and that's why I do it.
And you, and you help with the sheriff contract too with the city.
Yeah.
And I think that's worth a ton to us.
Sure, sure. Oak certainly, uh, helps negotiate that contract. I mean, that, that, that's mostly Kevin's, or the sheriff's, uh, baby, but, um, but we certainly help with writing these contracts.
Thank you for doing that.
Sure.
We should mop in cushions. We, we budgeted five thousand dollars is what the contract, how with the city of Cascade is. That's very reasonable as it's not just a kidding.
Well, and maybe some of the civil stuff.
Yeah. The prosecutor's income.
Gotcha. We have it as five, so we need to adjust that.
So do we get anything from the city of McCall to fight the civil stuff?
No, uh, we don't, because we don't fight the civil stuff over there now. The stuff that.
No, I'm talking about the code, any impact area stuff.
The impact area is a different. I don't, uh, I'd have to ask Oak about that. I don't, I don't know how much work we're doing in the impact area as far as code enforcement, but I don't think it's much.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what, what their obligation is versus our obligation.
Well, and I don't think they know either.
Right, right.
It's kind of a gray light area. Who's gonna take it to court? Who's gonna be the?
Right.
The hammer here. And we're still trying to discuss that, but I think with the new law kicking in in July here pretty quick, some of that's probably gonna go away, I'm hoping. And see what the negotiations end up being with McCall, but there's gotta come to a point where you guys gotta stand up and fight your battles and we'll fight our battles. No mixing.
Yeah.
Because it's just a mess.
Yeah, we at least gotta figure out something.
Okay, if there's nothing else, you're out of time, mister.
Cool.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, you guys.
Thanks for the letter.
Oh, sure.
I was appreciative to read what your thoughts are.
Yep. All right, thanks, you guys. Appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, we're gonna keep right on going. Where did DeeDee go? She's coming. Come on up. You're in the bucket.
I don't even know what to do.
If you wanna bring him, bring him back. Sorry, sorry for interrupting.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah. No, I wanna find out.
Morning, DeeDee. Good? We're doing.
I'm done with.
Thanks. Let's hear it.
I'll get it.
Okay.
Okay, so what we're gonna do in the next budget is probation department. Welcome, DeeDee. Have a seat. Be comfortable.
Yeah, no, I didn't know what to prepare for, so.
It's okay. We're gonna tell you how much money you get.
Thank you.
What we like to do is just review the, uh, detention center costs first.
And where's that?
That's one hundred dash zero eight.
This is crazy, woman. We have the detention center up there. In McCall, the budget was four hundred and seventy-six thousand. Before we close, now look at it. Okay, so there's really no increases. In fact, it looks like we might have too much in there.
Well, the activity in twenty-two was thirty-six thousand. So thirty-five thousand makes sense. You have to make pieces with.
But the trend now is not to really put kids in detention if they can treat them, right?
Right, trend's always gonna be that way. They've also, um, at the Eta County facility, there was a program in there that we did utilize in the past that was an intensive outpatient treatment program. That kids were not accessing treatment in the community to get patient treatment for up to three, four, five months.
So are you thinking that thirty-six five's enough, too much?
Um, I think, oh, we're consistently considering, uh, last year, the juvenile that was in detention, for the most part, was the one that was on the cusp of that was the county. I only utilized detention.
Takeaway.
It's thirty-six. Twenty-three is eighteen. It's half of that. This year's.
This year.
It was eighteen thousand one twenty-eight this year.
Remember, you got the years flipped there.
So Doug, are you happy with, just leaving it at thirty-six five? Are you good with that?
I would think of, of using it, yeah, exactly, unless there was some way to reuse that money for accessing, um, stuff within our, um, community. Uh, whether it be, you guys used money for, um, for offer money to Ignite Idaho in another fashion. But, uh, they have been instrumental in just in these first several months of accessing and offering treatment to those who are high risk in the community to decrease that risk quickly. They wanna wait a year to see what's trans. Because that would be a great outpatient funds. The only other reason I would use, um, perhaps money from here is accessing, uh, money for GPS for house arrest.
Grand money, yeah.
Money over there, because I, again, use that to put kids on house arrest in the home instead of, like, detention.
Right.
For her to be able to do that, Doug, do we need a different line item in order to support, you know, do it out of this? You know, it's called detention fees.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would recommend that we leave, either we, we reduce the, let me try to gather my thoughts. This, this budget for sure is for a cost of a juvenile going into detention. I think the commissioner should continue to utilize this one hundred zero eight for that expenditure. If there is a belief that we can reduce that, that, that's fantastic.
And reallocate it?
Reallocate it if need be, absolutely. But I, I don't think we should do it this year. Uh, we, yeah, I mean, on an average, we've been spending, and I know you don't have all of the figures, like the twenty-one, twenty figures, but it's been on an average between twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand each year. This year just is very unique that it's, uh.
So low?
So low, uh, which is great, uh, but I'm going to contribute that to some of the work that DeeDee's been doing with juveniles, with utilizing, um, community resources, as she indicated, she's indicated to you that she's utilizing Ignite. And I don't know if that's an increase, but I do think, to make a long story short, I would recommend for at least fiscal year twenty, twenty-five, to leave this budget at thirty-five thousand and taking a close look at it next year.
And so you wanna cut it back to thirty-five?
The question I have is, uh, twenty-two is thirty-six. Twenty-three was eighteen.
Right.
So are we increasing, should that be the increase back up to thirty-five? Because, I mean.
When fiscal year tw- thirty-five thousand, Commissioner Thompson, has always been the amount that it has been, or hasn't been an increase. The, uh, once the juvenile detention center was closed, the thirty-five thousand is what was budgeted for the cost of juveniles being held in detention.
Right.
So I feel that we should just leave it at the thirty-five thousand, but ultimately the decision is.
No, I was just looking at how those years flip.
I do see what you're saying, yes, sir.
Yeah.
So is it a possible, possibility that it's gonna increase next year based on the trend?
We don't know.
We don't know, right? You, you really don't know.
Okay.
Okay, so then, let's move on then to probation. On one oh six. And let's start at travel mileage. Um, you bumped that up to forty-two hundred. I'm assuming that's training?
We talked about actually merging the mileage and the travel. I think we talked about, actually, merging, uh, mileage and the travel altogether.
Okay, I see what you did.
I'm simplifying.
So you had thirty-two to-
If there was anything that might be increases, I was requesting that more be education as well as anything that's training, because I'm gonna have a new juvenile probation officer, I'm gonna have to go to post. Um, but I do, I will, wanting more training for all of my officers and that freedom and comfort to be able to go to get that training, to bring it back wherever that-
So the travel itself goes to zero? And it's all gonna go into travel mileage? And you bumped that a grand from the previous year? Those two. And the next one, you left the same. Supplies you left the same. Cell phones the same, you don't need more cell phone if you have more staff?
Um, I think what we had talked about was, uh, I guess it was out there, it was the board here, that this was still appropriate.
Yeah, last year, you only spent sixteen fifty-four last year, so-
It was five of us last year.
Probably plenty. Hey, fuels gasoline, you left the same. Education, you left the same.
Education's up eight hundred.
Oh, you're right, sorry. I'm, I'm having vision problems today. You can jump that up eight hundred. Everything else is the same, we'll go on down to the lottery, and that's, um, is that the tobacco fund?
That's actually the lottery fund, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that's funding that we do get from the state of Idaho. Um, and DeeDee can explain to you how those funds can be utilized. We do have a remaining balance right now, and DeeDee would like to utilize that a little bit more next year. She has some ideas of how to use those funds.
So this is an in and out fund then?
It, it is. It's a, it's a revenue fund that we have, on the net, we receive approximately twenty-five hundred each year from the lottery fund from the state, but we do have a remaining balance right now of lottery funds. Do you want to present what, how you plan on expending those?
I think that we had like a thousand dollars that are still kind of, I was asking for a little bit more, again, for the, so much of our community, but really all, our entire community, um, is working towards, is focused on education as well as crisis, as well as, um, just, uh, just activities within our community, a lot of work in ways, and you've encouraged. So we've had five thousand, um, this year, I realize we had that, of course, I'm gonna give it to our community as much as possible, uh, and we keep a thousand aside for our MDT, which are kids that are, it's a, something through the prosecutor's office, for, uh, families who are in the, kind of possible child protection cases, and so we have a little bit of that money set aside, that if they need to have a housing or, or support in some way, whether it be power or door fixed or, or something like that, we just have that set aside for those things, secure our community. Then the rest is just supporting programs that are already in our community that just need to be made, so we just did, um, a thousand total to the SOBRAD, uh, to Cascade, as well as, uh, we'll call it, we just got five hundred. Um, and there was a bunch of stuff through Hope Week, um, that we needed, some of the sports that we did. Um, and then, um, I gave five hundred to the community, uh, garden, uh, for support. So if I can have more money, I'll spend more money for-
Well, I guess my only question is, is there no restrictions on the lottery funds?
There is.
You have to make sure you stay in those, those boundaries and-
Uh, it could be anything, it's anything to support the juvenile, says juvenile justice, um, things within our community. It can be any, for my job as a juvenile probation officer, it could be that, uh, but it's typically, again, my ideas to, um, not having, it's not my case, so, you know, for programs that are allowing people to build.
And I, my own personal feeling is, is you know how much you have, it's your program, as long you stay in the boundaries and don't violate, those rules, spend where you want, where you think it's needed. Um, I, I think that's very appropriate. Let's go on down, we're gonna run out of lunchtime here. All right, scram fees are nine grand, but you used eleven thousand last year. We need to jump that?
There's a scram fee, what's that stand for?
Scram is, uh, is the, I don't know, the acronym. It's all about for, it's a device that you put on the ankle that tests for consumption of alcohol as well as, um, even contact alcohol, that out usually. We do get money back, to pay their scram fees. Um, now as for how much we have received on scram, I'd have to, hard to know that, but, um, so we give like half.
A little bit more than half, actually.
Yeah. But we're over budget on it.
No, I'm sorry, those are in the wrong order. If you go to fiscal year twenty twenty-four, what's been expended, uh, so far is three thousand forty-seven ninety-seven.
But the year before, you went up to eleven.
In fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we're on pace, sir, even less than two.
Okay, so you're happy with the nine thousand? Or the fifteen, oh, nine thousand?
Nine thousand. What's that adding off to where you're at the year before?
It's a little, let's move down to UACs. That one you might go over this year.
It's nice, I have a surplus, I, we were paid, uh, during the gap time, um, so I just did an order based on that credit, that might give us two of us this year, what I have, but this is also, I guess, uh, sending through, uh, cause what we're trying to do is increase our UACs, it's, um, it's like ten dollars to send in a sample for testing, um, and then by, uh, instant test, yeah, it has tests for, for different substances. If it comes back negative, that's one three dollars, we're gonna toss it. So my department, I'm slowly integrating that, it's been a long-term process that they've been doing, is that they feel better sending it to the lab, those results, make sure there's no adulterates, um, so we're just practicing on cases that, especially when they've been in that long time, we'll save, maybe some money, just use the instant tests.
They may just randomly send some in, some not, if they don't know if they're gonna have an instant test or not, they're not gonna know the difference and-
So we can that switch slow.
That's really cool, it's only three dollars for an instant test.
Three, maybe four dollars, but yes.
Wow, that's gonna save a lot.
Yeah, and especially for the fees, we still collect, you know, ten dollars for that.
Right, right.
Juvenile alone, or whatever. That is a ten dollar plan.
It's raining.
Gosh, it's gonna be nice driving to-
It'll be a nice, cool day. Okay, electronic monitoring, you left the same, and shelter home.
Isn't that something I think we've talked about, um, just changing the wording of that?
Looks like a hotel room for-
I don't think it's ever been-
No.
And we do have families, in fact, that they need, it's great, um, but to access any kind of indigent, these indigent needs may be, uh, cause I get, I, at least I've been participating in a, um, uh, a research project through, or University of Oregon, and I've been getting two hundred and fifty dollars a year out of that for participating, and that money goes to, via, um, gas cards and, and I find the department as a whole utilizes it, not just for children's cases. Something that sometimes is just as simple as they're just needing some groceries to get a break or, if they're in Gas Cave, they don't have the gas money, so always getting , uh, calls or some issues, I would give them that support. So I would like to be able to access, if we have it, somehow access that for the department as a whole, juveniles as well as adults, in some manner, to truly assist families to be able to achieve, uh, and not as, as simple as gas money and, um, being able to provide some free-
I guess what I'm wondering, DeeDee, is we have money available for indigent, rent, power and phone.
I'm sorry, gas, so that's a process.
How we could run that through that system and use those funds? We got like forty thousand in there?
It's as easy as me sitting in my office, sitting with the families in crisis, saying we just need, is there anything upset or upset or whatever, to be able just to give to them and not say, here's a form for the lottery, there's a process, you can, if you say no.
Oh, no.
No, it's, if there's a way that that could be done, that was easy, but that's why I felt that if we have this already in our budget, there's a way for-
So I think it needs to be a long-term conversation, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I, I do, I'm aware that there is a nonprofit organization in the community that wants to kind of assist with the indigent, yeah, um, I think that a long, definitely a conversation needs to take place, um, I just don't know how that's gonna look, though. And we need to talk with legal to see if you can use existing taxpayer dollars that were previously levy for indigent services that we no longer levy for, but we have this, we have a remaining amount, um, leftover that could potentially be used by the county for some, uh, rent assistance, power assistance, but could it be donated to a nonprofit entity for gas cards or food cards? That's something that I think we need to discuss with legal.
See if you can change that.
Yeah.
Can you know, DeeDee, I think that out district has a fund-
And she could change this title, yes.
The out district, Hunter District Gal?
Yes.
Has a fund for stuff like this too. We might wanna talk to some of those folks and see if they need that. Money could be used.
Yeah, I used to get some ga, or, um, some gas cards through, um, they would give us something, I was thinking about to them.
Sure.
I figured this was already allocated.
You ever do like-
Just change the titling, just go and change-
The question for today is if we can change that, uh, just to be indigent services or something of that nature within the probation department budget that they can use on families, uh, that are on probation and that DeeDee or the staff determines are in need of a gas card, I think, um, that would be appropriate.
Is that when I can just go purchase those gas cards?
You, you would need to submit a receipt and then expend it out of that lot.
Okay, are you, any more questions? Um, how's it going? You're getting it all set up? Everything's going the way you want?
Don't get deep, we only have five minutes. We got our auditors here.
Uh, so far, so good. I, I was at a meeting this morning and the best way it can offer is give me a year.
Okay.
It gives me time to, um, establish all the things I need to establish, just see if it's received well, if there's any folks like it, um, but, I'm just busy.
Keeps you out of jail.
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Bet you my pleasure.
Okay, we're gonna keep running on going, cause we're about out of time, our next agenda is an action item. This is an update from our esteemed emergency manager, Mr. Juan Benia, and a request for some money. Come on up to the mic. Good to see ya.
How are you? Juan Benia, emergency manager. Um, so a couple things, uh, I'm here to upgrade, update you on the BSU all hazard mitigation portal, uh, and we're about to roll this thing out to all our agencies, cities, county, um, and constituents, uh, on what it is and what it can do, and so I'm here to talk about the rollout, but before I do that, I wanted to give an update on what we've done thus far. Uh, it's about over thirty people involved, probably close to forty people involved in getting all the data and having conversations about what we'd like the portal to do, what we portal, what the portal would look like, how we would utilize it, uh, from a, a city aspect or a county aspect or an individual agency aspect, whether it be first responder, hospital, those types of things. What that all hazard mitigation portal's gonna do is allow for some historical data as well as, um, actual live data, uh, that's being updated by all kinds of, uh, other sources in court that have linked, uh, onto the portal. So it's for all hazard mitigations, which means is all types of incident types that we may see, um, in our county. So we picked, we picked out the best ones that we like, okay, this is our part of our all hazard mitigation plan, these are, are ones we're seeing constantly, so we want data on that, so people can see that. Um, so there's, uh, the public output of it, uh, which they can go in and actually look at historical data and see, okay, what type of, what, what's in the area that would be an all hazards, uh, issue that we may have to deal with or look at, or that, and they can look at that data, look at actual live data for that day, and, you know, depict, oh, okay, so it's middle of August, yep, there's smoke, oh, when I look at the fire maps of historical data, it seems like this is the time, there's always smoke, those types of things, but when you get down to individual, um, stuff, there's gonna be a private sector right now, just I and the wildland, uh, the wildland person for the county's gonna have that private, but more agencies as they start to use the thing will request that, and there'll be a couple other of live data or historical data that we can use for planning, um, on top of the already existing data for planning. So what this thing's going to do is allow for an overall encompass of all types of hazard mitigations that we deal with, how we've dealt with them in the past or what they were in the past, and what's actually happening to date. Um, and the other is, is using this plan as a tool to help derive emergency operating plans, all hazard mitigation plans, countywide fire protection plan, um, and any other sequential plans that like cities or counties may need for emergency response, um, in, in any of those affected areas. So we could actually do a lot of planning, and this would just be one of those tools we use to derive that information and that analytical data that needs to go into those plans, we could do is like, hey, what does the portal say? What have we seen, what do we see last year? Uh, or the last three years or whatever. Um, there's a lot of actual leaks per type of incident, um, and we're trying to whittle those downs to what agencies are, what are we really look, how many times have those been clicked on, so we'll be doing a lot of updates, um, as we start to roll it out and people start to utilize it, saying like, we don't really need, uh, specific to like flooding, there's a whole list of them, we maybe only send to our flood administrator needs that, but really nobody else looks at it, so we can have that on her particular, for her private, her, of her private sector of that, she'd be, have access to those types of things, but we're not gonna utilize it, we're not gonna clutter up, cause you can really clutter up the map, as you'll see here, uh, when you start clicking everything, it can make like a clear map to like, you have to really zoom in to see what you're actually looking for, cause you have too many windows open. Um, that's my thing, cause I always just, I forget to take them off, put them back on, um, and I'm like, okay, there's too much on the map, I gotta start over. So I do have a demonstration, Cara couldn't be here today, she had a, uh, conflict issues, conflict with traveling today, so, uh, she set this little fifteen minute presentation, I'll let you watch that, and then we'll go over the costs associated with the rollout.
You know what, Juan, we are behind and we have auditors here, I'm questioning if we should do this fifteen minute presentation. You guys, you guys wanna look at this now, or should we-
My main thing about the presentation was just to keep you abreast of what was happening and what the, what the portal looked like, but we could do that later, that's fine with me.
Could you send it to us individually, we could watch it?
Uh, I'm sure the clerk can.
Okay, and you're asking for two grand for the rollout of this border?
Up to two thousand dollars, so that, well, that includes some advertising, um, getting the invite, and then the rollout event that we're having at the department, at the Donley Fire Department. And that would include food and stuff like that, too.
And then I've asked Doug to put extra funding on Cara, uh, Cara's budget each year for two thousand?
Right.
To take care of ongoing maintenance on the website. Like today, we just got an email from, uh, Mr. King that just notified us that he had tons of acres of blowdown today, so that information we could upload it into this portal?
Right.
So people could look at it, neighbors, and say, hey, you know, I may need to check my property because this guy just had blowdown today. So that's, we'll talk about that when we get to Juan's budget, but that's an ongoing expense that we will have also.
Oh, this is my neighbor to the west of me.
So one thing is, is the two thousand dollars is to pay for a little bit of the advertising with McKenzie to make sure we get the right people there, and then how we're gonna do the rollout. Um, I've already talked to a couple caterers, um, to handle the, you know, rollout food thing, and, uh, so that was just, I was actually just putting on my plate of, a little bit ago, so-
We're taking that.
I'm taking that on. Um, I do have one person who says she usually does like thirty people for twenty-five hundred bucks, but because she's my daughter, she said she'd do it for a thousand. So, um, she's gonna do it for us and she'll provide all the food, desserts and everything, and her company's called Buttercup Bakery and Catering, so, um, so she, she's excited. I just said, you're gonna give us, you know, tell them that you're the one that we're looking at right now, but-
Are you guys willing to go ahead and vote now on the two?
So we're just looking for the two thousand dollars to move forward. Now, do you have any more questions?
No, I think, um, this is a lot of work coming to a head and we need to go through with this. I'm gonna make the most that we authorize to expend through, two thousand dollars out of pilt for the all hazards portal.
We could actually even do it out of-
Or a general fundraiser, whoever Doug wants to take it out.
We can do it Title III too, I think.
Well, yeah.
Yep, you can use Title III for that.
Let's do Title III. I'm in my motion.
I'll turn it.
You've got a motion to second, you can spend two thousand out of Title III for the plural all hazard- All Hazard Portal rollout. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you so much, and please look at the demonstration, because it's only a fifteen minute one instead of the three hour one, you can get a lot from it, it's a pretty good demonstration she put together, so, if you have any questions.
We need to learn how to use this, because this is gonna be a tool in the future.
Yep, yep.
Let me know if you have any questions, and, or if you like any, have any ideas, let me know, I can see what you can do. Thank you.
Thanks, Juan, for bringing that.
Thank you, Juan. Is there being, is there anyone in the audience that has a comment for the commissioners? No? There being no other business, this meeting is adjourned.